To the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is approval of the regular agenda as presented. Is there any member of the council that wishes to make any additions to the regular agenda? Are those additions that you gave me, are those, do they need to be added?
Okay, we need to add the two license renewals, or one trans-merchage license and one VFW street dance.
So I'll call those six I, J, K, and L. And also, on the public utilities, there's an additional item, Mike.
Yes.
Item 10B.
Yes.
We'll add that. And on the liquor and gambling agenda, item nine L, a temporary liquor license.
Yes.
Is that all of them, Carrie? Six, six items? Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda with those six items added.
So moved, second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the regular agenda. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to either add or remove any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The minutes of the regular city council meeting, which was held on July 8th, 2025, and the minutes of the special city council meeting, which was held on July 31st, 2025, are before the council. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to make any changes to those minutes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve both of those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes from July 8th and July 31st, 2025. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Okay, we have a council member that has to leave early, so I'm gonna move a couple items out of their sequence. The first of which is on the finance committee, and that's item 7D. I'm gonna ask Jackie Boobolds to excuse herself for this item. We'll let you know when you can come back, though.
Okay, thanks.
So Mike, can we just wait till Jackie's?
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
All right, Mr. Mayor, we have item 7D on the agenda, consideration to approving a purchase of services contract with the Detroit Lakes Regional Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. And I'll have Kelsey speak to that.
Mayor and council, this is a new one-year agreement with the Chamber of Commerce, who provides basically the staffing for the tourism bureau. The language is exactly the same as it's been in the past. The only change has been to the amount, it includes a 4% adjustment to annual price of $69,940.
Okay.
Mike? So, yeah, Mr. Mayor, the finance committee discussed it at their three o'clock meeting this afternoon. We had no real discussion, just complete support. So we have consideration to approving a purchase of services contract with the DL Regional Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the purchase of service contract with the Detroit Lakes Regional Chamber of Commerce and the Tourism Bureau. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Also, I would like to do item 7A, if we could, Mike.
Sure. So Finance Committee met this afternoon, like I mentioned, and we have the award for a sale of electric revenue bonds. And we will have Heidi start out on that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we have before us Michaela Hewitt from Baker Tilly to help explain the result of our electric revenue bond sale that we held this morning. Michaela.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, I see if we can pull it up, just a couple slides. So again, here to present the results of the sale of the city's electric revenue bond, Series 2025B. Okay, sorry. So the final bond size was $16,060,000, Electric Revenue Bond, Series 2025B. The purpose for the issuance was to receive proceeds to finance construction of a new generation and substation expansion project. A little bit of the background on the interest rates, which is always an important component of the bond issuance. Back in early June, when the city authorized the sale of the bonds, we were looking at a true interest cost of about 4.62%. We looked at updating those rates next week, or, excuse me, last week, a week prior to the sale, and we were looking at closer to 4.42%. That also did reflect rating reviews by both Moody's and Fitch rating analyst agencies, and I'll go through that process. And I'll go, the final bid award, or the final lowest bid today, was a 4.26%. So it was about 40 basis points less than what we were looking at back in early June. You'll see here a summary of the nine bids, so the city did receive nine bids for this issue. The range of the interest rates is very close, from 4.26% up to 4.29%, so very competitive rates were received. And again, the lowest bid was the 4.26% true interest cost. Here's a summary of the pricing for the bond sale. The, all of the bids did include a premium offer, meaning that they were paid more than 100% for the principal maturities. And as a result, with the premium that was included, the new power amount was the $16,060,000. And again, that was to finance the $17 million of construction costs plus funding the debt service reserve as a requirement of a revenue bond. It is a 20-year term of debt service and eight-year call provision, meaning the bonds cannot be refinanced earlier than eight years. As part of this process, the, we did go through a review of the credit rating, and this was, it had been quite a few years since the utility had a rating. We worked with both Fitch and Moody's. And the purpose of the rating is really to provide a measurement of the financial strength and ability to repay the debt obligation. It serves as an independent third-party assessment, and it really is due diligence on the investors as far as the strength of the issuer. And again, the lower the, the higher the rating, the lower the interest rate that you would expect to receive on the bonds. So the first, or one of the analysts was with Fitch, and they had assigned through the review a double, AA negative on the bonds. And the rating reflects the utility's very strong rate flexibility, low operating costs, and history of strong financial performance. So it really was showing an improvement over the last few years, resulting in a higher credit rating. Oops. So Moody's was the other agency that the utility worked with. They assigned a AA3 to the bonds, as well as assigning a AA2 to the city. And their rating reflects city's maintenance of strong reserves and liquidity, utility's monopoly control over a growing service area, and then the strong debt service coverage on the bond issue itself. And one of the things to point out with the, with the projected revenues, both from the project and existing revenues, we're looking at four times coverage on the debt service, so that's very high coverage. Here's just a summary of where the, where the two ratings fit between both Moody's and Fitch. And you'll see it's a very high credit rating at the AA3 and the AA negative, respectively, between Moody's and Fitch. And here's the city's general obligation, that, again, Moody's AA2 and S and P of a AA. Sorry, it's a jumper. And this is just the bond buyer index, which gives the, the average of the interest rates. You'll see that they've stabilized over the last several months. There was a big jump earlier this year and then stabilized since then. But that's one of the things we look at, is the volatility in the market, to really try to understand. And we fell in a fairly stable week, which again is resulting in the interest rates that we receive today. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but the recommendation would be to approve the resolution awarding the $16,060,000 Electric Revenue Bond, Series 2025B, to the lowest bidder, which was Jan, Jenny Montgomery Scott LLC, based on their low bid of 4.26%.
So does anyone in the council have any questions for Michaela regarding the bond issuance? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would entertain a motion from the council at this time.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so item 7A, we have the consideration to a resolution awarding the sale of electric revenue bonds, Series 2025B, in the original aggregate principal amount, fixing their form in the specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment. Finance Committee discussed, we recommend approval and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution awarding the sale of the electric revenue bonds as outlined by Michaela. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Mayor, I'd like to say thank you to Heidi for all the work she did putting all this together for us, too.
And make sure you use your mic, so we can hear you.
We've got these brand-new mics, but you have to put Chabato on the top of them.
So without objection, I'd like to do a little more jumping around here. I would like to go to item 4C. And at this time, I'll adjourn the regular meeting and call to order a public hearing to consider establishment of redevelopment project 44, the redevelopment plan and establishment of tax increment financing district 44-1. And I would call on Larry Remen at this time to introduce this item. Larry?
Yes, this is a workforce housing district, so it's a nine-year economic development district. It will produce 36 apartment units, market-rate apartment units, and it will generate approximately $69,000 annually in tax increment financing. The plan is to provide the developer with $427,904 in tax increment financing over the next nine years. And that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak or ask a question regarding the establishment of redevelopment project number 44? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion, I think that's on the CDC agenda.
Your Honor, I would move that the council pass a resolution approving redevelopment project number 44 and the redevelopment plan therefore, and approving tax increment financing district 44-1 and the tax increment financing plan therefore, and authorizing an inter-fund loan.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution approving redevelopment project number 44 and the redevelopment plan and approving tax increment financing district 44-1 and the tax increment financing plan and an inter-fund loan. Discussion on the motion?
Well, I'd just like to comment that being on the Development Authority, this project is very much needed because we do need housing of all types, from low-income to higher-income properties like this. But the spalment property, that property's been taxed at approximately $4,600 a year. When this project is completed and more, based on what the assessment's gonna be, there're gonna be property taxes of $60,000 to $80,000, so it'll be definitely better for everyone, including the city.
Okay.
I have one question. I, I know I got this information at the committee meeting last night, but I can't find my notes, I apologize. How many, how many units did you say?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments from the council? We have a motion and a second on the table, further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And also, Wendy, without objection, I'd like to go to Community Development Committee, item number 5G.
Item 5G is consideration to a resolution approving the conditional use permit to allow extraction of materials at 983 Richwood Road, HOG Inc. And Larry, I believe you can...
Essentially, this is a conditional use permit to allow mining of the former Cleveland Farm. We would like to remove approximately 500,000 cubic yards of material from that site, which will reduce the average height from 15, or lower at 15 feet, to a more buildable level for new industrial park lots. The plan is to do this over a 10-year period, and HOG Incorporated is leasing the property from the Development Authority dur-
Okay.
All right. Your, your honor, the CDC met last night and heard the information, and I move that the council pass the resolution approving the conditional use permit, allowing the extraction of materials at 983 Richwood Road.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution approving the conditional use permit to allow extraction of materials at 983 Richwood Road. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The Detroit Lakes City Council has adopted a rules of decorum for public participation in city council meetings, and I'm not gonna go through the 25 rules that we've established, but now would be the time, if anyone wishes to address the council. If you do want to speak, I would ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address and the subject of your comments, and please direct all your comments to me as the chairman of the meeting. So if there's anyone that wishes to address the council this evening, now would be the time. I think, I think Janelle signed up, so Janelle, if you'd like to come, come up to the podium. And if anyone else wants to speak, I'll still give you a chance to sign up on the signup sheet, even though I have it up here. Go ahead, Janelle.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Janelle. The remainder of my personally identifiable information I've shared with Carrie and is available off the record. I wanted to speak to, I believe it's item 5A, if I'm not mistaken, the proposal to implement prayer/invocation prior to sessions. I wanted to come here and speak against this measure. I do know that the Lemon Law was, not repealed, but rather, the Lemon Law was declared, something that was no longer going to be used as precedent moving forward at a federal level. However, I do believe that we can bypass a lot of the discussion that I'm sure will follow that at the federal level and keep things focused on legislative matters and avoid bringing religion into the legislative sessions at the city level. Particularly, I wanted to speak to a few items that I, that I read through in the proposal itself. If you'll give me one moment, let's see. I noted that the proposal recommended that the content of the invocation, if it were implemented, should avoid political statements. And if that proposal were to be passed, I wanted to, at this point, ask what constitutes a political statement, since all aspects that one might potentially pray for, if we're talking unemployment, food instability, financial concerns, housing problems, lack of education, which tends to fuel poorly-informed arguments, people's lives and families being in danger, all of these are things that one might pray about, and all of them are political. As the added states, homelessness itself is a policy choice. And so I also wanted to ask why there's a move to include prayer at city council meetings, the city council being a legislative and therefore political body. So the proposed prayer, by nature, as a quote legislative prayer, setting a quote solemn and reflective tone for lawmaking would thereby be inherently a political statement, saying that religious beliefs set the tone for lawmaking. This might seem all well and good if you're part of the in-crowd, but if you were to consider the hypothetical litmus test of a different religious belief other than the one that you hold and the people that you know hold, would you still be in favor of implementing a prayer or invocation? I know that the proposal says that other religions would, of course, be permitted, religions other than Christianity would be permitted to hold indications, which I appreciate. But at the same time, given the demographics of the area in which we're in, there is an unspoken assumption that those indications are going to be almost exclusively Christian in nature. Again, if that proposal were accepted, I wanted to also point out that the verbiage of having non-denominational content, that that be reconsidered because non-denominational does speak exclusively to subsets of Christianity itself and not necessarily to any other religion other than Christianity. I also wanted to ask how content guidelines would be enforced if the proposal states the city cannot regulate the content of the invocation. If the council cannot quote police, monitor, or edit the content, how will it be ensured that any of the other content guidelines are adhered to? And finally, I wanted to propose a, or rather, give an example of that hypothetical litmus test I mentioned earlier and point out that if those who proposed this prayer prior to sessions wouldn't want a member of the Satanic Temple giving an invocation, if they expect most of the invocations will be Christian prayers, then what's being sought is not religious freedom, but rather religious preference.
Thank you for your comments, we'll take them under advisement.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Are there any other agenda items that somebody would like me to adjust tonight? Otherwise, we'll just go back to the top and move through that way. So hearing none, I will adjourn the regular meeting and call to order a public hearing to hear public comments on the proposed abatement of diseased trees for 2025. And with that, I would call on our Public Works Director, Sean King. Sean?
Mayor and council, this is our annual dead and diseased trees. We're just, we identified them earlier this summer, and now this is to remove them, diseased and dead trees.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the issue of the proposed abatement of diseased trees in the city for 2025? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion.
Okay, the Public Works Committee reviewed this resolution, and we are ordering the abatement of diseased trees for 2025 and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to order the abatement of the diseased trees in the city for 2025. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And at this time, I would call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed street and utility improvements for Lynnview Estates First Edition. And is the city engineer gonna address that one?
The city engineer is.
All right.
One second, Mayor.
City Engineer John Pratt.
Mayor and council, we have a brief public hearing again this evening. This is to address the proposed street utility improvements for the Lynnview Estates First Edition project. Project is effectively just a fairly small 10-lot subdivision that's being proposed by a developer. And part of the financing for the project would involve special assessments, and so we're required to hold a public hearing. So I'll cover some of the existing conditions, the proposed improvements, the costs, what the assessments look like, and provide an opportunity for question and answer at the end. Project location, this project is just off of Shorewood Drive. It's about a 10-acre chunk of undeveloped land. Where we've been to date, in July, we adopted the preliminary engineering report. This evening, the council will consider authorizing design after the conclusion of the public hearing. If that moves forward, we would work on design through the month of August, bringing those plans back to the council for approval and authorization to bid in September. And then, planning to open bids and bring bids to the council in October, which actually would allow the project to start yet this year, which is a little bit unique from the standpoint that we don't typically start construction projects that late. But the nature of this one would allow a contractor to start quite late in the construction season and effectively work on the project until the weather doesn't permit it, and they can finish things up in the spring. We would have an assessment hearing for the project sometime later this fall, after we've received those bids. Existing conditions, again, not a whole lot to say. It's a 10-acre undeveloped field just off of Shorewood Drive. There are no existing, existing sanitary sewer, water main, or other infrastructure within the development. We are extending sewer and water to the property as part of the Shorewood Drive improvements that'll get underway here very shortly. As far as proposed improvements, fairly straightforward. We're gonna extend sanitary sewer and water main into the project from Shorewood Drive. Be looking at eight-inch sewer mains with four-inch service laterals and six-to-eight-inch water mains and one-inch water services. One item to note is there is a kind of an optional water main loop that we're looking at that would extend from this project over to a water transmission line near the existing standpipe property. So that's one item that we're still contemplating, whether we'll include that or not. The other maybe a little bit unique piece to this puzzle is there is a fairly large adjacent residential property just to the south of the proposed subdivision. It's highlighted on the screen there. That property does not currently have sewer and water, and there is no sewer and water in this portion of Shorewood Drive. So the, the project presented an opportunity to serve that property with sewer and water. The property owner was receptive to that, had some conversations recently with them, and they've indicated they would like to, to proceed with that. So we would be extending sewer and water service to one property that would be effectively outside of the primary project area. Stormwater, we would do a little bit of storm sewer with the project, fairly minimal. The way this, the topography is, we don't need a ton of it. But we would have curb and gutter to some inlets on the street. Those would discharge to a number of infiltration swales, which is how we would accomplish our stormwater treatment with this project. And pretty minimal site grading outside of the right-of-way on this project. We may have to do some minor stuff just to get water to where it needs to go, but should be pretty minor. We're proposing a 30-foot-wide urban section street, which is a couple feet smaller than what we would typically do. But it's a very, very short street with only 10 large lots abutting it. So the thought was that a 34-foot-wide street would be sufficient. There would be a cul-de-sac at the end of this, end of this street. Project costs, the base project cost is just a shade over $500,000. And then we've got that water main looping that I mentioned, which would be about another $100,000 option. Like I said, that we're still contemplating that. Project be funded mostly by special assessments in accordance with the city's special assessment policy. The little bit that is being picked up by the city would come from the stormwater and water utility funds. Essentially, the, the special assessment policy for these types of projects is that we would assess 100% of the sanitary sewer main, water main, service lateral costs. The water utility fund pays 100% of those water main looping. Uh, the water utility fund uh pays one hundred percent of those water main looping costs. Um, the street, again, is a hundred percent assessed to the developer, and then stormwater is a fifty-fifty split between the stormwater utility fund and the developer. Based on that, this is how the costs shake out. So out of that, that base project cost of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, the city's share of this would be just under thirty thousand, with about just a, just a shade over a half a million dollars being assessed to the developer. And again, that water main looping, if we proceed with that, uh, would fall under the city's share and come from the water utility fund. Uh, then we spread those costs out in accordance with the city's uh policy, and in these cases, we generally do a per lot or per each uh allocation of the costs, simply because the benefit is pretty uniform between all the properties that are involved. Um, so we basically take all those costs, divide them um by the number of lots that are benefiting, which in this case results in assessments to the Lynnview um development of just under fifty-three thousand dollars per lot, and that's for all the street, sewer, the water, stormwater, uh everything. And then about twenty-five thousand dollars um to the lot that's directly south of the, the proposed development that would get the sewer and water service. Their portion would be that twenty-five thousand. Uh, as far as terms and conditions, um, it is a, being it's a ten lot, ten lot subdivision, the developer would be required to pay twenty-five percent of those assessable costs uh to the city before we would award that construction contract. And then the balance is assessed for a maximum of twenty years following substantial completion. However, the developer can request a five-year deferral, followed by a fifteen-year term, which is generally what most of the developers tend to do uh in these situations, but that decision will be made here um as we get the development agreement executed. And that's it, Mayor. Any questions?
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or wishes to make any comments regarding the proposed street utility improvements for the Lynnview Estates First Edition? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion.
Okay, um, Mr. Mayor, I uh give full consideration to the resolution ordering approvals and authorizing plans and specs for the street utility improvements for Lakeview Estates First Edition. Iso move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution ordering the improvements, authorizing plans and specifications for the street and utility improvements for Lynnview Estates First Edition. Discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to mention that, you know, as we keep going along, every year specials keep going up too. So this particular property, the lots are gonna be average rate of about fifty-three, three thousand four hundred dollars uh for specials, for those specials. I mean, so as John Pratt's mentality tells, these uh prices keep going up, and that's true of this project too.
Okay. Further comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the public nuisance at fifteen nine thirty-seven Long Lake Road, and I'll call on our Code Compliance Officer Priscilla. I think that's your official title, isn't it?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Hello, Mayor and uh City Council. The first um on Becker County, the, the reason why the address on the um agenda is the old address is because it wasn't changed on the county, so that was the initial uh violation um cited. So it's, it's twenty-four thirty-five Long Lake Road. Um, it was annexed into the city in two thousand twenty-two. In two thousand twenty-three, I met with the owner, um Doug Branchard, to discuss the numerous violations throughout the property. The goal was to work on the violations in phases. First phase was the yard, the exterior storage issues. And the second was the property maintenance of the house and the accessory structures. This aerial image was taken in two thousand twenty-four and shows many items still around the property. Although there has been some progress in the front yard, it is still in violation of multiple sections of the city code and the zoning ordinance. He was cited for uh zoning ordinance violations regarding refuse, which is unlicensed and inoperable vehicles, as well as piles of junk or items. I usually refer to people's junk as items because they don't really like it being called junk. The exterior storage ordinance requires all items and the listed, with listed exceptions to be stored inside or fully screened from adjoining properties. Mr. Branchard was cited for city code violations regarding unlicensed or junked vehicles uh set forth in section nine zero one point zero four subdivision thirteen. Section ten zero two A point zero four of the city code covers maintenance and requires the property be, to be kept in a clean, safe, and sanitary condition. On August sixth, I drove by and I took some photos from the right of way and then leading up to the front door. The camper, the truck, and the trailers and such should be parked on the driveway and not in the grass. Here's another photo of another truck parked in the grass, as well as a right, white rectangular storage container behind the shrub. Another angle of the, the truck and the trailer, you can see another car in the back. This image shows an unlicensed vehicle and inoperable vehicle right in the front. The flat tire in this photo shows that it is inoperable in its current condition. I observed more cars that appeared inoperable closer to the house, as well as items that, per the zoning ordinance, do not meet the exception for exterior storage. The pile near the, near the red car, as well as the pile in front of the garage. Another view of the exterior storage violation of section three subdivision two N, machinery, tires, and such. This image shows additional items seen in the front of the red tr- and the white truck, as well as front of the green truck, and near the accessory structure in the back of the photo. As I said, there has been some progress in the front of the home, but this image shows that there are still a good number of items that are required to be stored inside and/or removed from the property, such as the pile to the right of the porch. Due to the homeowner not meeting the deadline, staff recommendation for the council, stack regimen, they, staff recommendation for the council is to approve the resolution and to abate the nuisance. The Community Development Committee last night recommended the property owner have until October twelfth to clean up the property. If it has not been cleaned up, then the city can move forward with the abatement.
Okay, other, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the public nuisance at fifteen nine thirty-seven Long Lake Road, which is also twenty-four thirty-five Long Lake Road? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed, and I would call on the CDC Chairwoman Spry.
Your Honor, the CDC did review this information uh last night at our meeting, and um I would move that the council approved the resolution declaring nuisance, ordering abatement, and assessing costs as a service fee at that uh address at two four three five Long Lake Road with the amended um date of October twelfth versus the seven days that should have been initially in the.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution declaring a nuisance and ordering abatement and assessing costs as a service fee at twenty-four thirty-five Long Lake Road. Discussion on the motion?
I have one question that I forgot to ask last night. Um, when, you know, the word abatement is removal of the items, correct? Um, do we have any sense of what it would cost to remove these items, which would then be assessed? I mean, do we have any kind of ballpark or anything?
Due to the variety and the size of the items, I do not know.
Hard to guess.
Plan on getting a quote, depending on your decision. I plan on getting a quote this week so that the homeowner knows what that cost could possibly be come November twelve, or October twelve.
And he'll have sixty days from today to do what he can to remove. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion?
Well, I'd just like to comment, this, this property's been this way well over ten years, and um I've got many people out there, since we, we took this property into the city, we thought there's gonna be cleaned up right away, but there's one excuse after another. And but my apology goes to the neighbors that have to live across the street or near this mess that they have to look at all these years, and we've gotta just move faster on properties like this because it's a, it, it, this is a real eyesore. This isn't just a couple garbage cans. It's a, as you can see by the pictures, it's a complete mess. And um I think sometimes we're, we're burning Priscilla at too many hats to wear because uh the, to take care of properties like this, and we've got other properties like this in Detroit Lakes, but we have to ask somebody who's got more time to clean up this city on property like this. And I'm, I'm certainly glad that we're gonna get this cleaned up, and for the neighbors out there, October twelfth can come fast enough.
Your Honor, I have one more comment that I meant to make.
Yep, go ahead.
I just, I really wanted to point out that these conversations have been happening for three, two to three years. This isn't a knee-jerk reaction by the city. You have been, and I just wanna thank you for all those efforts to try to help this homeowner reach compliance, and, and this is where we land, so thank you.
All right, any further comments? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Priscilla, you might as well stay because we got two more to talk about. At this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the public nuisance at two fifteen Central Street East, and I would call on Priscilla again.
Greetings. The owner at two fifteen Central Street is Sheila Anderson, and we have been in contact regarding the violations at this property since two thousand eighteen. To bring, I sent her a notice of violation July seventeenth with the deadline to comply by July thirty-first. This aerial is from two thousand twenty-four, and as you can see, there is a good number of items in the backyard. Ms. Anderson was cited for refuse and exterior storage violations of our zoning ordinance. She was also cited for similar city code violations for inoperable vehicles and storing household items outside. She was also cited that the overall property had not been maintained in a clean, safe, or sanitary condition as required by city code section ten zero A, ten zero two A point zero four. This photo was taken in the front yard of, on June ninth. You can see household furnishings and other items that should be stored inside per the city code. This photo was taken July seventeenth from the right side. This is July seventeenth on the left side. The construction materials to the left are allowed to be part of an ongoing project, otherwise they need to be stored inside. There was no active project onsite, and I checked our system, and no permit had been issued for a project in the near future. Just over the hood of the red vehicle on the bottom right, you can see a tub in the front yard. This photo shows similar state um on August sixth, but the tree on the left side of the property has been removed. The fence panels are lying near the front of the deck. This is from the left side that same day. Again, the construction materials are still, they're piled differently, but they're still there. As I walked up to the front door and took photos along the way, you can see household, whole, hi, household items such as a vacuum cleaner and mattresses in the driveway. I spoke with the twenty-year-old son, who gave me a tour of the backyard along with his niece, who also lives in the property. It's a multi-generational household, so there's a lot of people living this, in this one small house. To the right of the stairs, you can see the tub has been moved, and it is holding up the fence panels. To the right side of the front door, you can see household furnishings, such as what might have been bookshelves, um, a box springer mattress, uh, tools, batteries, um miscellaneous items. On the left side of the door, there's more household furnishings, perhaps a desk, as well as more tools, a heater, um, a number of items that do need to be stored inside. This area is behind the truck that is currently in the driveway. On the way to the backyard, you can see a sink on top of lawn furniture. This is the gate leading to the backyard. The tires are not allowed to be stored in the yard per our exterior storage ordinance. This is directly behind the house. I noted a dryer, a pile, a pile of straw under that tan tarp, and miscellaneous lawn items. The straw is an issue, it is a rodent attractant. On top of the fence panels, in this photo on the bottom right, you can see their fence panels are some kind of construction materials. There are items piled on top, such as seasonal decor, netting, and it looks like a stereo that is, I do not believe it is rated to be an outdoor system. The cluster behind the bins on the table, uh, the tires on top of the table, and the numerous household bins on the left side of the photo put the property in violation of the refuse and the exterior, exterior storage ordinance. This is another shot back toward the house. Again, uh, it shows piles of refuse and exterior storage violations in the backyard. Shows there's a camper parked in the backyard. It must be parked on a hard surface. On a previous visit two years or so ago, the grown daughter had moved back in and stated that her mother Sheila and her boyfriend lived in the camper because the boyfriend did not have a good relationship with the children who were living inside the home. Section one subdivision eight of the zoning ordinance does not allow people to live in campers as it is not approved, it's not an approved use in the R two district. The camper is not hooked up to a septic or a sewer, and there had been what looked like drainage under the camper during the visit. A freezer, a dryer, and a toilet can be seen close to the house, and piles of construction items that are not being used are stacked next to the home on the right. A number of items piled outside are, again, a rodent attractant. Due to the homeowner not meeting the deadline, staff recommendation is for the council to approve the resolution and abate the nuisance. The Community Development Committee recommended the property owner have until October twelfth to clean up the property. If this is not cleaned up by then, the city can then move forward with the abatement.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the issue of of the public nuisance at two fifteen Central Street East? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed. Chairwoman Spry.
Your Honor, uh, CDC did review this yesterday, and I would move that the council approve a resolution declaring nuisance, ordering abatement, and assessing costs as a service fee at two fifteen Central Street East.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to declare a nuisance, order the abatement and assess costs as a service fee at two fifteen Central Street East. Discussion on the motion?
Well, once again, I wanna apologize to the neighbors that have to live alongside this mess. I've had calls from these neighbors for years and nothing gets done. For years during our August budget meeting, I've been advocating that our city has a, a day cleanup week to help clean up, because this isn't happening in just a few neighborhoods. There's houses like this throughout town, and when you let it keep growing and growing, you get bigger messes. I, I hope that this year during our budget meeting, we'll be able to set money aside so that we can prevent this type of neighborhood happening. And um I'm glad that we're gonna have to get this thing cleaned up by October twelfth. This something should have been done many years ago.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. At this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the public nuisance at four twenty-one State Street East. Priscilla?
So Jerome and Lynn Hendricks own four twenty-one State Street East. I have met with Lynn on numerous occasions in the last two years. On July sixteenth, a notice of violation was sent with a deadline for compliance of July thirty-first. They were cited for refuse and exterior storage zoning ordinance violations, as well as city code violations for unlicensed and inoperable vehicles and household furnishings being stored outside. While expecting for compliance, on August sixth, I noted that there hadn't been much progress aside from the lawn being mowed. There were inoperable vehicles present in the right of way, in the driveway, construction materials not part of a project in the yard, inoperable vehicles and construction materials from this angle as well. Recreational vehicles are allowed, but they need to be stored on a hard surface. The household appliances pictured in the center, near the shed, are not allowed in the yard. It looks like there is a chair and possibly a, I don't know what those appliances are. It could be a washing machine. I didn't go into the yard to check because I did not have permission. Without walking into their backyard, I, it appeared garbage had accumulated between the shed and the boats. You can see bins and other items stored outside the shed. Here you can see tires and other items piled up in the yard. Due to the homeowner not meeting the deadline, the staff recommendation for the council is to approve the resolution and to abate the nuisance. The Community Development Committee recommended the property owner have until October 12th to clean up the property. If it has not been cleaned up, the city can move forward with the abatement.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make any comments or ask any questions regarding the public nuisance at 421 State Street East? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed. Chairwoman Spry?
Yes, Your Honor, the committee reviewed this as well, and we unanimously agree to move to approve a resolution declaring nuisance, ordering abatement, and assessing costs as a service fee at 421 State Street East.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution declaring a nuisance, ordering abatement, and assessing costs as a service fee at 421 State Street East. Discussion on the motion?
Well, I can't go without saying something about this house. This house is right behind our old Public Works building across from the freezer plant, and it's been in that condition for many, many years. And it's just, for us expecting fellow citizens to live alongside something like this is absolutely ridiculous. So once again, I hope that this year during our August budget meeting, we can set money aside so that we can have a cleanup day here in Detroit Lakes so this type of stuff doesn't happen anymore.
Further discussion from the council? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Priscilla. So that brings us to the Community Development Committee, and I would call on Chairwoman Spry.
Thank you. Item 5A is consideration to establishing a policy regarding prayer before city council meetings. This was placed on the agenda for the CDC to review the recommendations for establishing a policy on how we would implement the resolution to begin our meetings with prayer. The CDC committee and the rest of the council have seen the recommendations. Just for a little review, because I'm not sure what everybody's involvement has been, shortly after the resolution, we received a letter from the county attorney, city attorney, excuse me, identifying some legal liability that could pose a risk to the city. Following that, a memorandum was shared with the committee with some recommendations for possible policy items that the council could consider as we implement this resolution. Mr. Ramstead indicated at our meeting yesterday that he can't tell the council what to do. He can only provide legal opinion, and so that is what he has done, his concern with the legal liability and making sure that we have a policy that does its best to protect the city from those kinds of legal liabilities. The council, excuse me, the committee, I'm sorry, I had this all in my head, I was going to be very clear. After reviewing all of the items in the memorandum, the committee agreed that our next best step is to have the city attorney actually write a policy with those items included in that policy for the entire council to review and consider at our next meeting. We have three members absent tonight, and given the seriousness and respect with which we want to manage this matter, we all felt that it was important that all of us be present to consider this and weigh in. Some of the items that we talked about were, that kind of took precedence was a recommendation in the memorandum that any invocation occur prior to the regular business of the meeting. So before our meeting is called to order, that is one of the recommendations of when to enter into an invocation or prayer time. That the use of the word God was allowable or acceptable legally because many faith-based reference their deity as God. However, the word Jesus Christ would be very specific to a particular religious belief or denomination, so some of these things are in that, are in those recommendations. And so our recommendation at the end of this is to establish the policy, develop a draft, and allow the entire council to review it. So we would just table this matter, it was just a discussion matter, there was no intended action on the agenda, and bring it back at a later date once the entire council has the ability to look at that draft policy.
Okay, so without objection from the council, we'll table this item until the next city council meeting in September. Go ahead, Wendy.
All right. Item 5B is consideration to a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 544, rezoning an area from RA Agricultural Residence District to R2 One and Two Family Residence District at 865 Shorewood Drive. And I'll hand it off to Larry, but just a reminder, this is a second reading. We've considered this before.
This would be the second reading to rezone the property that is now going to be platted as Lynnview Estates. So it's pretty straightforward, and it makes sense, and it fits with the comprehensive plan.
The councils that did it again, the committee did review this with Mr. Remen, and unanimously recommend that the council adopt ordinance number 544 rezoning the area from RA to R2 One and Two Family Residence District at 865 Shorewood Drive. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance number 544. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and ordinance 544 is adopted.
Item 5C is consideration to a resolution denying the variance to allow up to 16 boat slips instead of six boat slips at 1897 Bridgeview Estates, Bridgeview Estates Shared Lot and Dock Association. And I will hand this off again to Mr. Remen.
Yes, this was a request from the Bridgeview Lot and Dock Association for a variance to allow 16 boat slips instead of the six boat slips that they have on a controlled-access lot. The DNR sent a very good letter explaining why we should not approve that variance. The Planning Commission also listened to all of the arguments of the applicant and reached the conclusion that the applicant did not show that they had unique circumstances in their property that would give them the legal justification for a variance, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommends denial of the request.
Your Honor, the CDC reviewed all of this information as well, and unanimously recommend that the council, I apologize, approve a resolution denying the variance to allow up to 16 boat slips instead of six boat slips at 1897 Bridgeview Estates, and an ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution denying the variance for up to 16 boat slips instead of six slips at 1897 Bridgeview Estates. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item 5D, consideration to a resolution approving the variance to allow a setback of less than 30 feet for construction of an attached 40 by 25-foot garage at 600 Shorewood Drive. Larry?
This is an item that came before the council last month. They referred it back to the Planning Commission for review. The owner amended his request from a 14-foot setback to a 19-foot setback. It was also pointed out that the road right-of-way in that area is much wider than normal, so he's already nine feet further away from the road, from the road surface than other properties. And so with a 19-foot setback, the Planning Commission felt that it would be possible for him to park in front of his garage without extending into the road right-of-way, and they have recommended approval of the variance as requested.
The CDC did review this last night at our committee meeting and recommend unanimously that the council approve a resolution approving the variance to allow a setback of less than 30 feet for construction of an attached 40 by 25-foot garage at 600 Shorewood Drive, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a variance at 600 Shorewood Drive. Discussion on the motion?
I would just like to, I think this is the one, if my notes are correct, that I think I specifically asked you that the property in this instance met the statutory requirements of showing that there was a need for this. Correct?
The Planning Commission made those findings, and they are listed in the resolution that you're adopting.
All right, thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item 5E, consideration to a resolution approving the final plat of Long Lake Acres at 2445 U.S. Highway 10 West. And again, I'm going to hand this off to you, Mr. Remen.
Thank you. This is a three-lot commercial plat on Highway 10. It's on the north end of Long Lake. The owners are planning to build storage sheds there, and that is a permitted use in the B3 district.
Thank you. The committee reviewed this as well and recommend that the council consider approval of a resolution for the final plat of Long Lake Acres at 2445 U.S. Highway 10 West, and ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution approving the final plat of Long Lake Acres. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item 5F is consideration to the request from Trey Garns authorizing a one-year extension on a variance to allow a 15-foot side yard setback and a 20-foot yard setback on an I-1 light industrial district for construction of a 10,400-square-foot Flex Space Shop condo at 1070 Randolph Road and 1065 Fortune Avenue extended to August 12, 2006. My understanding is there was nothing unusual about this. There were some construction delays and those kinds of things, and the committee considered this request and unanimously recommend that the council approve this resolution, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve a request from Trey Garns for a one-year extension on a variance at 1065 Fortune Avenue till August 12, 2026. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And we've covered 5G. 5H is consideration to a resolution approving the amended variance to allow a 20-foot setback from the property line adjacent to the road right-of-way and a setback of 41 feet from the ordinary high watermark for construction of a two-story home at 1217 West Lake Drive. And my understanding is this has been brought before. We recommended they go back to the Planning Commission, and they have done so. And Larry, if you can just kind of bring us up to date on that.
Well, essentially, a month ago, we approved a variance with a 43-foot setback from the ordinary high watermark, and the applicant has since been out and measured more closely and apparently needs to have a 41-foot setback instead of 43 feet. And that's the only change, or that's the only amendment to this request.
The CDC reviewed this and recommends that the council approve the resolution for the amended variance to allow the 20-foot setback from the property line adjacent to the road right-of-way and a setback of 41 feet from the ordinary high watermark for construction of a two-story home at 1217 West Lake Drive, and ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution approving an amended variance at 1217 West Lake Drive. Discussion on the motion?
I have a question. What's in our packet, there's a 33.1% impervious surface coverage. We had some discussion about that?
Yes, they did request 33.1% impervious surface coverage, but the approval was just for a 30% coverage, and they would have to apply for a mitigation permit to have that.
So do we need to, do we need to change this?
In the resolution, while it says that's what their request is, it does only allow them to have the 30% impervious surface coverage.
That's clear in here?
That is clear in the resolution.
Further questions or discussion?
Thank you, Larry.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we'll move to the Public Works Committee, Chairman Zeeman.
Okay, the first item is 6A. This is consideration to approving a memorandum for understanding with Lakeview Township, and I'm going to call on our engineer, John Pratt, to go over that with us.
Nope, I think this one's the city administrator.
City administrator.
Mayor and council may recall, a few months ago, the city completed the annexation of the Wendell property on the south end of 270th Avenue. At the time, it was, we did an orderly annexation agreement with Lakeview Township. The township had requested an agreement, in this case, MOU, just outlining how that portion of 270th Avenue was going to be maintained. I have to apologize because this kind of fell through my folder and thought we had approved it, but we didn't approve it, so I'm asking council to approve it now.
Okay, Ron.
Okay, with that, the committee reviewed this and give recommendation for the memorandum for understanding with Lakeview Township, and ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve a memorandum of understanding with Lakeview Township. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next item is 6B. I'm going to have John Pratt, our engineer, to go over with our monthly status report.
Mayor and council, still plenty going on with construction, wrapping up a number of projects from last year, including the street rehab, Willow Springs. I would comment that we are working on a solution where we would be addressing some of what would be failed turf establishment along Willow Springs. We've had a few phone calls on that, so we are engaging a contractor to address that issue, so that'll be forthcoming in the next couple of weeks, but that's really the last remaining thing on the Willow Springs project. Southwood Shore Estates contractors indicated that they're going to begin work on some of the site grading for that subdivision within the next couple of weeks, so we should see some activity starting up out there. West Downtown, we're actually just waiting for a little bit of paperwork before we issue final payment on that one. The Water Tower Project, the crews have basically finished up what they classify as the ground steel fabrication phase, where they've basically done all the fabrication on the steel bowl that will go on top of that concrete pedestal further down the road, but they do as much of the fabrication on the ground as they can. They've completed that, and within the next week here, it sounds like the coating crew will show up and start doing the painting on what they can on some of the logos and graphics and things like that. Be a little bit of site work later this fall, and then right now, the schedule is to hoist the bowl into place sometime early next spring, so more to come on that. No activity yet on the Heartland State Trail, Trailhead project. Hoping here we see some activity in the next couple of weeks on that. Forest Street is moving along. We've got curb and gutter complete, base course pavements down, they're working on grading for sidewalk, and the sidewalk contractor's coming in later this week to get as much of that done as they can here in the balance of this week, but should be wrapping up most of that work by the end of August. There will be some stuff that trails into September a bit, but I'm hoping we can have things largely open here towards the end of the month. West Lake Drive, Phase 3, and the beach project, continuing to make work on that project. Right now, trying to get the first set of the contract documents which address the street, get those finished up and submitted into MINDOT for review and approval. And sort of the same is true with the beach project, that's just a little bit further behind, but catching up here pretty quickly. So by the end of the month, the street portion of that should be completed from a design standpoint, and probably within another month, by the early part of October, we hope to have the beach improvements pretty well nailed down. So we just had a committee meeting and review meeting on that here within the last couple of weeks. We'll have one more of those before we finalize things and get that thing out for bid later this fall. DMR Legacy Grant, again, that's a series of projects out there that's being funded by that grant. A number of them are completed, such as the parking lot, improvements for the biking and Trailhead facility out there. They're working on They're working on the Nordic ski trail, they've got that graded and are working on installing the snowmaking equipment that's gonna go along that Nordic loop. Still have lighting and things like that to do out there. There were some additional single track mountain bike trails that were installed, those have been completed, so kind of getting into the seventy, eighty percent complete category with that. Shorewood Drive, a bit of a curve ball on that. As of this afternoon, it sounds like the contractor wants to start work on that project starting Monday. The first piece of that'll be the installation of that sewer and water main that I, I mentioned earlier that we need to get to the Bristland property. So there'll be sort of focused construction in that area for about a week and a half before Mark Santa Gravle comes in and starts the reclamation process and the remainder, the remainder of the street. So, things are gonna be winding up out there over the next several weeks. Truck Highway ten, East Shore Drive Intersection Study, again, we've been meeting pretty regularly with MINDOT and some other stakeholders on that. There's an open house scheduled for August fourteenth, which would be this Thursday, right here at City Hall. It's a public input meeting where they'll present all the different options that have been evaluated. Kelsey, do you remember what time that meeting is? I think five? I'll let Kelsey dig for a minute, I think it's at five, right here in the council chambers, but... So there'll be an overview of all the different options that were looked at, along with what's being recommended. This is one piece of a larger project that MINDOT's gonna be doing in two thousand twenty nine, basically from the east side of Detroit Lakes to Frazee on Highway ten. But this is focusing a little bit more on some intersection improvements out on Highway ten and East Shore Drive and two hundred and ninetieth Avenue. Two hundred and seventieth Avenue, at this point, we had a public hearing last month on that. Right now, what we are aiming for is to have bid that this winter and make those improvements right away next spring. So that's sort of where we're targeting that project at the moment. People's Park, we dropped that one, I need to remove that. The Bristland subdivision is, is Lynnview Estates, which we already covered here this evening, so. Any questions?
Any questions for John? If not, we need to approve the monthly city engineer's report.
Okay, I would like to make sure that we, motion that we go ahead and approve his status report and he's been very busy and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept and approve the city engineer's monthly project status report. Discussion?
I would like to say that a big thank you to John Pratt because he's been working not only on all the products we normally do in our regular year, but with all the, all the planning for next year for spring of two thousand twenty six, he and his crew have been very busy getting all these plans put together and it's, it's a, it's a big job. And he's come through with all of it, it's, it's extra work and he's done a great job on it and I just want to say appreciation for the work that you do on that.
Thanks, John. Do we need to vote?
We need to vote, yeah.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And Ron, there's the four items on the agenda.
And the first item, we're gonna call it six I. This is a license agreement for telecom construction as excavation. It's for yearly license and I so move that we accept it.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve an excavation license and that was for who?
That was, that was for telecom contractors.
Okay. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next item is gonna be six J. It's also an excavation license, a renewal, it's for Z X Z A Y I Concrete. And I so move that we approve for their license agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve an excavation license for Z A Concrete. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is six K. This is for a food truck license. It's under Anthony's Tex Mex license for the annual fee of ninety or ninety-five dollars and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a transient merchant's license for Anthony's Tex Mex. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next item is six L. This is for the VFW's street dance that they're gonna have on August twenty third from six to ten and I so move that we go ahead and let them have that dance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a special event permit for the VFW for a street dance. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I've got one other item here, Your Honor.
Okay.
The Public Works Department now, is now in charge of birthdays. And we do celebrations, we don't do it all the time, but we make special requests here. And I want all of you to join in with me and wishing Heidi, our finance officer, a big birthday. I, I went around town, I was gonna get candles for the cakes, but I couldn't find enough. We're gonna get some in for her. But anyway, she does a great job for the city and we just wanna wish you the best and and happy birthday to a fellow North Sider. Let's sing happy birthday to her.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Heidi.
Alright, happy birthday, Heidi.
That's all, Your Honor.
Okay, so we'll go to the balance of the Finance Committee and that's Alderman Sterns.
Yes, we'll start with item seven.
I'm sorry.
I think there's one more item for an easement on West Lake Drive.
Yeah.
That John handed out?
And I can cover it.
I'll let John speak to it.
Okay. So, Ron, do you want to take that? Here it is, right here.
Okay. Okay, this is easement on West Lake Drive. We just got this, I'll, I'll let John go ahead and give us a review of this and then I'll come back and prove it.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, sorry, this was a late addition here today, but essentially what's in front of you is for the council to consider granting a permanent easement from the city to Becker County. This is in relationship to the, the West Lake Drive and Beach Improvement Project that included a map that shows the area that we would be granting that easement for. And the reason we're doing this is there's a, a lot of different funding mechanisms associated with this project, meaning outside funding sources, some of them are in our name, some are in the county's name. Ultimately, we're trying to make sure we leverage all of those to the maximum possible extent. And granting this easement allows us to use some funding that's essentially in the county side of things and leverage those funds for that area, so.
Alright, so Ron will need a motion.
Make a motion that we go ahead and approve this permanent public roadway parking and trail easement, I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a permanent public roadway parking and trail easement between the city and the county of Becker County. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Back to you, Mike.
Right, item seven B from the Finance Committee. We actually had a brief discussion on this, it's regarding the funding for a DMRA parking lot. Because of some cost savings, there doesn't need to be their request at this time, so we're tabling item seven B.
Without objection, we'll table item seven B. And that brings us to Public Safety Committee.
No, no, we got, don't worry.
Is there one more?
Item seven C, consideration to a resolution authorizing acceptance of a Minnesota Department of Education Library Construction Grant of seven hundred and forty nine dollars, seven hundred and forty nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety nine dollars for roof restoration and accessibility improvements to the Detroit Lakes Public Library. And I will let the birthday woman, Heidi, speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is sort of one of the last items that we need to, in order to submit all of our information to the Minnesota Department of Revenue in order for them to sign our grant agreement for the library construction grant. So if you would please approve this or consider approving this this evening, then I can submit everything and hopefully we can keep this project moving forward.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright, so we have item seven C, consideration to a resolution authorizing acceptance of a Minnesota Department of Education Library Construction Grant of seven hundred and forty nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety nine dollars for roof restoration and accessibility improvements to the Detroit Lakes Public Library. Finance Committee discussed and we recommend approval and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of the library grant. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And there's nothing, I don't think, on the Public Safety Committee agenda? And so we're to the Liquor and Gambling Control Committee and...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have item nine A, consideration to approving a temporary expansion permit. So Zorbas is helping host an Oktoberfest on September twentieth. And so they are asking for permission to basically expand their premises out into the, pass the street out into the park, so they can have, so people can transport their alcoholic beverages to that area as well. So their sales will remain to, you know, in the, on the property, but there would be, it would allow them to have liquor outside. So, so Liquor and Gambling Control Committee discussed, so we have a consideration to approving a temporary expansion permit for Zorbas for September twenty, twenty twenty five. I recommend approval and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a temporary expansion permit for Oktoberfest at Zorbas on September twentieth. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Attached to that is item nine B. And Bucks Mill is asking for approval to, for a temporary intoxicating liquor license on the same date at the same location. And it should be noted that the mayor will be tapping the first keg, so and the Liquor and Gambling Committee discussed that and so we have consideration to approving a temporary intoxicating liquor license to Bucks Mill for September thirteenth, twenty, twenty twenty five. And I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a temporary intoxicating liquor license to Bucks Mill Brewery for the Oktoberfest on September twentieth. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And is there one other?
So nine L.
Nine L, yeah.
So along with the VFW's party on August twenty third, they need a liquor license or a temporary liquor license. So Liquor and Gambling discussed that and I recommend approval and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a temporary liquor license for the VFW for their street dance. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mike, you're on a roll.
Yeah, I'm the closer, I guess. Public Utilities Commission met this morning and we have, we reviewed some bids for a control enclosure at the new jet substation. And so there were two bids received. One was for six hundred and forty nine thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars and the other one was for over a million two. So doing the simple math, the, and knowing that they both met spec, specifications and the engineer did review them and found the Tracty LLC bid to be acceptable at the six hundred and forty nine thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars. So the Public Utilities Commission discussed it and we have the consideration to accepting bids for control enclosure at the new jet substation and awarding the contract to Tracty LLC. I recommend approval and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the bids for the control enclosure at the new jet substation and award the contract. Discussion on the motion?
I have a really quick question for curiosity more than nothing else. What does that extra five hundred thousand dollars entail?
So the metal enclosure is a specific building that the metal enclosed switchgear goes in, all the control equipment for the substation goes in, the battery charger, the rack of batteries. Yeah, it's a lot of money for a twenty or a thirty by fifty building. That's the going rate for substation enclosures right now.
To be so different, though, those two bids, it's just incredible.
Okay, further questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And there's one other item too, Mike.
Yep, item ten B, Your Honor. So, just got this, this, this afternoon after the Public Utilities Commission did meet. So back at the June tenth council meeting, the council approved an FES contract with the Western Area Power Administration, also known as WAPA. On July seventeenth, WAPA updated their general power contract provisions and, and in it, there are two changes that do need to be acknowledged by our council and approved by our council. And one is, Vernell can say these a lot easier and a lot better, but the GPCP seventeen and then also the GPCP forty four. And Vernell did review them, felt comfortable and actually they, he feels that specifically the GPCP seventeen is very beneficial. Forty four is not that big of an issue. So I have the motion to approve the updated general power contract provisions of the firm electric service contract with WAPA and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the amendments to the FES contract. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I have some recommendations for some of our advisory boards and commissions. First of all, I'd like to recommend the name of Tasha Restad to be appointed to the Arts and Culture Commission. I would entertain a motion to...
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Tasha Restad to the Arts and Culture Commission. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I would also recommend that Nate Hunter be reappointed to the Detroit Lakes Development Authority and I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to reappoint Nate Hunter to the Development Authority. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I would like to recommend to the city council that we reappoint Josh Hogg Grabber to the Development Authority and I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to reappoint Josh Hogg Grabber to the Development Authority. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I would like to recommend that we reappoint Chris Jaskin to the Development Authority. I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded to appoint, reappoint Chris Jaskin to the Development Authority. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I would like to recommend that we reappoint Dan Josephson to the DLCC board and I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded to reappoint Dan Josephson to the DLCC board. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I would like to recommend that we reappoint Ryan Hill to the DLCC board and I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to reappoint Ryan Hill to the DLCC board. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I would like to recommend the reappointment of Carol Oberholzer to the Library Board and I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to reappoint Carol Ober, Ober, Oberholzer to the Library Board. Discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Any items that need to come before the council yet this evening, Kelsey?
No, Mayor, just one clarification that MINDOT Open House is Thursday. It starts at five thirty, there's a formal presentation at six and wrap things up at seven.
And that's in regard to that intersection of East Shore Drive and Highway ten? Just some information and announcements, the balance of the Budget Committee meeting's schedule is listed on the council agenda. There's one more joint governance meeting that'll be hosted by the county on October seventh. And the balance of the city council meetings are noted with the November meeting being on Monday due to Veterans Day. So with that, anything else further, Doctor?
No.
Mike?
No.
Jackie?
No.
Ron?
Just want to say a big thank you to the VFW for putting in their handicap dock here this week as ready to be used for everybody that's handicapped and I thank them for their, their fundraising and having it all happen and also Sean King for having his crew come in and put all that into the water. And also, we're talking about Sean King and his Public Works, they've done a great job all the time, but this summer they're keeping our parks and streets and everything going. I just want to say thank to Sean and also thanks for his, for his crew for getting everything done. Thanks very much, Sean.
Yeah, we had the ribbon cutting for the handicap dock yesterday and it sounds like the DAV and the veterans group or the VFW are gonna continue to fundraise for a couple additional projects, so that's great. Wendy, anything further?
Nothing for me.
Craig? Alright, the business of this council has come to a conclusion and the meeting's adjourned. All right. The business of this council has come to a conclusion and the meeting's adjourned.